It's just really. Right. The melons. Yeah. Oh, I know that. Oh, I know that. Oh, it covers everything. I will listen to that. Yeah. Right. Okay, here you go. Hundred percent.
All right. That's my floor time now. Okay.
Only this. Okay. Sorry. I could build up on the last. Or again. Again. Yes. Yeah. This is the June 20th, 2020 for the meeting of Woodstock Community Unit Schools 200 Board of Education. Please rise from the platform, please. Flag in the back or flag in front. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Dr. Bidwell?
Here.
Dr. Ferris?
Present.
Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Hedley?
Here.
Mr. Homo?
Present.
Mr. Muselli?
Here.
Mr. Perisi?
Here.
Okay, our first item on this site is our consent agenda. There is a deployment agenda. Please take a moment to review the consent agenda, let me know if anybody has anything they'd like to pull from the consent agenda. And if there are no items to be pulled, we'll adjutate a motion, including the agenda, please. We'll be, uh, putting the consent agenda whenever you are ready to do so.
Moved away at the reading of the approved consent agenda as printed in the board agenda, including the June 20th, 2023 personnel agenda.
Second?
Okay, we have motion by Mr. Perisi, second by Dr. Bidwell. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Homo?
Yes.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Mr. Muselli?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is our recognition.
We're fortunate tonight to recognize a number of students and student athletes. First, we're going to recognize our class two A boy track and field state qualifiers. We're very well represented as a district down at Eastern Illinois University on the 26th and 27th of May. So, all our students have qualified for the state track meet. And then we are also represented the IHSA 1A boys tennis state qualifiers as well. And we are going to do our inaugural in our new, uh, adaptation prize award winners. As you know, the board changed their recipient process for pride this year. We have both our winners. Congratulations. So, administration has the boards to approve those boards tonight.
Okay, there's a suggestion motion. I've paid 167 materials.
Moved to introduce the following resolution. Whereas the Board of Education of Woodstock Community Unit School District 200 wishes to recognize the contributions of these individuals and whereas District 200 has benefited as a result of these accomplishments, now therefore it would resolve that the Board of Education of Woodstock Community Unit School District 200 hereby bestows special recognition and a certificate of achievement on behalf of the citizens of the district.
Thank you, second. Motion by Dr. Bidwell, second by Mr. Perisi. Roll call, please.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Mr. Homo?
Yes.
Mr. Hedley?
Yes.
Mr. Muselli?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
All right, and we call names. Please come up front, take your certificate, and then, uh, keep everybody up. We'll get a big group picture. If all of us get a parent, you want to take a picture, you can light it too as well. We're going to start with our boys two A track and field state qualifiers from Woodstock High School. First, qualifying the 110th hurdle and 200th hurdle, we have Jared Miller. Qualifying in the three yard field run, Phil Anderson. Qualifying in the 16 yard field run and part of our four by eight field relay, Ishan Metta. Also the four by eight field relay, uh, Ariam Metta. As well in the four by eight, uh, here, field relay, Cohen Chubb. And in the four by eight, Ellery Chubb. And in the shot hook, Tyler Moon. All right, take a round of applause for all our state. Thank you for that. Harrison Connaught, his coaching line. Congratulations. For Woodstock Northern, the pole vault, we have Landon Brayden. And the 110th hurdle, Juwani Young. A picture closer? Come out. You've got all the time in the world. So, here it is. Congratulations. All right, we have our 1A state qualifier in tennis. Uh, Mark Chang, one of the candidates tonight, he is available. Mark, congratulations. Uh, we enhance it. We'll also probably be able to sit here. Congratulations to Liam. And then bids for us. I go over tennis, but we're down there, but. Now we have our prize award winners. Uh, each year that the board education gets a prize award, that's a positive reputation, this is more education. Uh, we create a number of areas. This year, we did one for school. So, first, from Woodstock High School, we have Milo Jacobs. And from Woodstock North, McKendy Boss. Come on up, come here. Okay, we're going to move on to our board meeting. Uh, next section is poll or comments for anybody who wants to stay for those. Uh, we just take a little break here. Those who came primarily to the recognition to leave or they choose to choose to do so, you're welcome to stay. But if you registered here really to the recognition, you're free to do so. Probably enjoy yourself there, everybody.
Hi, thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda then is our, uh, communications. Communicating our time to community members and district employees to express the point of support and meaning not to debate the issue. There's a sign up sheet for the public to identify their name, address, phone number, name of the organization, representative, many, and brief description of the topic to be addressed. That is our generally limited to three minutes in accordance with Board Policy 2:230 and our otherwise governed by Board Policy 2:230. Do we have any good sign up?
No, we're not.
Okay. We don't require sign up for some of the board's. Anybody who would like to address the board that did not sign up. Okay, then we'll move on to staff comments. Are there any staff comments? All right, board comments. Are there any board comments? All right, I got a couple of just quick notes to let them inform the board of. Uh, Mike and I went up to see today, just to kind of update them on what's going on in the district and update just what's going on around the town. And also to talk a little bit about, uh, do a little, uh, assistance in terms of marketing the city for purposes of, uh, purposes of attractive business and so forth. Uh, there was a substantive discussion of really anything. We just tried to talk about stuff, had a briefing with the mayor and city manager, and then later we'll supply it around to the board of the city council. But, um, though we did actually have some other note, we did do that. Um, and then the other thing I want everyone to know is that next meeting, our July meeting, we had talked about doing the board's self evaluation. We're going to do that at the next meeting. There'll be a, um, somewhat a little bit of, most of it's going to be an open session. It'll be a little bit closed session to talk about retention and evaluation. So, at the next meeting, please prepare for discussions. If you have anything you want to address, let me know. We'll just bring it with you and we can discuss it at that time. I'll probably have a couple of things we want to talk about then. We'll just talk about how we think we're doing among ourselves. So, um, that's going to be our next meeting. We're going to have very limited, uh, business to, to address. Um, there may be some that we're going to have very limited, uh, business to address in a regular meeting. So, we'll do that fairly quickly. Okay? All right, um, any other board comments? Okay, then our next item will be, uh, super fun.
All right, uh, we're in summer. So, I hope all of our students, families, and staff are enjoying a great summer break, vacation, enjoying the amazing weather we've had recently. Here in the district, we're still really busy closing out the last school year, getting ready to start the next school year. Exciting times for us. We look back and really reflect on what will be a really successful year for us and look forward. And we're really excited to start the next year. So, best wishes to all for a happy and safe summer. And we do have a summary for the board of our enrollment athletics for last year. We talked about updating every year. I said it was after the year was over, just so we had all the spring final numbers. So, you have this year's and then also I have last year's for you too, just so you can all look at them side by side. Generally up, we had a positive year, um, which was, which was good. So, I signed action items. We had talked before, we were very interested. I just wanted to make sure you have it and have any questions, you can let me know at any point. That's it. Hope everyone has a great rest of June, 3rd of July.
Thank you. Next item then is our unfinished business, which is the reconsideration of bids for waste recycling. I believe it's our leaders who may propose, uh, contractors. So, we'll have to come out and ask the board to maybe answer a few questions.
Just some board notes. This would be representatives from LRS. I'm a little bitter when we talked about them last time. Um, this would be David Sanchez from LRS.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I've got a little presentation set up for you guys, um, kind of over the recycling value, recycling aspect that you guys have some concerns of and, um, wanted some more information on. Uh, so, just to start off, uh, this is our roadmap. We have roadmap zero waste. Uh, we usually incorporate that in schools. Uh, so what we do is we educate students on what bins are wasted in, uh, why is recycling important. Form, uh, student teacher degree teams that help their school level. Um, but by do, the way we do that is we can offer, um, truck events where we bring in a big truck to one of the schools, kind of have a, hold an assembly, um, kind of educate the, the kids on what's wise and in course to recycle, what we can do to, um, improve recycling at that school. We can also, uh, hold those meetings for your janitorial staff to kind of help them, um, you know, place signs around the school or, uh, just educate them on what we can't throw away, um, in a recycling bin to limit any, you know, unnecessary waste going, unnecessary waste going to, uh, to waste. Um, LRS is the White House. So, recently, George Rittenhouse is our sustainability manager, met with nation's leaders on, um, waste, uh, waste can be across America to kind of feel what we can do to combat climate change. Uh, she brought those ideas back to our, uh, our company essentially, and, uh, we're looking to incorporate all that, um, and kind of like her roadmap to zero waste, um, improve the efficiency of recycling. Um, one way we do that is we recently had LRS four hour pilot program. So, uh, I don't own both personally, but I'm sure you guys know that in the weeks or months, um, we've got to wrap the both up so they don't, they don't get damaged with, so, uh, ice, snow, all that good stuff. So, typically that waste, uh, that, um, plastic is going to landfill. Uh, so what we did is we partnered with many of the local recycling agencies, um, and we set this up where we, um, save 30,000, 30,000 pounds of plastic, shrimp crap typically is what's produced, and we, uh, were able to take it to our, um, our, uh, sorry, what's that? Our, um, facility in Northbrook, where we were able to, um, recycle it and send it to plastic, plastic facilities where we can repurpose it and sell it. Um, basically, um, recycle it, plastic, which is not really heard of, especially in this, this type of, uh, materials. Uh, we have strong social media presence. Uh, so we post on all our Instagram, uh, Facebook where we kind of keep up, probably love to keep up with recycling initiatives that we're, we're doing. So, we see the first, um, post here from Facebook, it would be from a school on head earth day event. So, we can do something similar to add one of your schools, whether it's earth day, um, again, any type of external events to educate, um, your students, uh, how we can, you know, improve recycling happen. Um, and then educational materials. So, I was able to bring a few educational materials. What we can do is, uh, provide that to your school. Uh, we can personalize it where we, um, you know, present to your school district, your school colors, um, put them where your waste bins are at, um, that way students know what they can and cannot throw away. Um, it's very hard to get the younger crop to, to get, uh, recycling, so get, start, start recycling. So, that'll kind of let them know what they can and can't throw away in their, in the traction, in the classes or in the cafeteria or where they may be. I believe that is all. Uh, we're open to any questions the board might have.
David, hi, um, I'm Kim Daniels, Director of Business Development for LRS, and we also have Chris Manley on the operations team here. And, um, we're confident we can provide a great service and also kind of like establish some early measures and work on recycling, you know, that's important to the shirt.
Thank you.
Welcome any question.
I'm going to turn over to Don and see if he has any questions at this point. Um, one of which is, do you have, uh, any recycling bins that you provide for the district, uh, within their schools?
And like, um, the total.
Like, and just to, to kind of market recycling, uh, one of our concerns is that we can't get, if it gets, it gets polluted. And so, if we have something that kind of catches their attention, is there something you can do for us in terms of providing the recycling bins within, like, centers, within the, maybe the gymnasium lobby or whatever, throughout the buildings? Uh, that, that would be a wonderful thing, I think, to, to help in one way.
So, you see that the, the, uh, larger ones that went from the residence homes around the city? Sure. They make much smaller ones. You know, the typical ones are probably this size and this wide, but there's much smaller ones that are probably more appropriate for.
But in the commons area, I would pick the bigger ones because there's a lot of traffic, like basketball games or whatever else, the smaller ones can fill up rather quickly. So, I would say not the smaller ones in the commons area.
Yes.
Just really doesn't access to those and have to buy those. Number two, uh, I really, really want to see an educational program set in place for our custodial staff so that they fully grasp what it is that you are recycling and how to, without making sure that it's, it's done appropriately. So that, you know, we've had in the past, uh, garbage and recycling gets, uh, put in together or, and then it gets sold from landfill. Well, then it doesn't do us any good, okay? Uh, and then also some of our custodians were under the impression with our previous, uh, vendor that they weren't recycling anyway, so they threw everything in the cartons. So, we've had real trouble with this in this district. So, I'm looking for a, a, a company that will actually, you know, help us educate. When you talk about education, I appreciate that, but particularly it's, the kids, yeah, I'm glad we're going to do that. But our custodial staff is critical to this because they're the ones that are going to be transferring this from the school into these bins, which then is recycled. So, I would hope that you can help us out there to, to making sure that we get, get them all on board and understanding what's happening across the district.
Yeah, as mentioned, um, uh, as you saw George, she's our sustainability manager. So, we can bring her, bring her into meetings, staff in the meetings, where we bring all your custodial, custodial for the whole district. We can have a talk, some presentations set up for them to kind of let them know, educate them on what can and cannot be recycled. Um, and let them know that if it's going to be recycled, then they, you know, recyclers recycle and waste it to landfill. But yeah, we can definitely set them, you know, prior to the school year, middle, or at, uh, whatever we're supposed to be doing your staff.
Thanks for having us. The question I have at the last vendor too, uh, I called personally several times on them. We had recycling bins that did not have lids on them, and then it became like a warehouse for garbage, okay? So, if we have concerns, I want to know that you're going to be responsive to us when it comes to these things, that you're going to actually follow through if we have concerns, that you'll make sure that they're followed through with. Because we're, you know, this bill is $6,000 a month we pay. We want a service and the service wants, we want it done, okay? It's important to our district to be our sustainability.
Yeah, of course. Um, you guys, if we do an affirmative partnership, you have direct, uh, contact me. You have my cell phone, over my email address. I'm like the first line of dispatch where any issues come up, any fires come up. I'm in McKendrick County company these weeks. So, I can swing by any one of your school's verbal issues, take the pictures, get our operations team involved. Chris is our general manager at Old Pond Office. Who's going to be servicing you guys? Um, so he's the, the head guy to go to there, and then Kim, of course, is our business development director. So, um, you're going to have all our, all our contact information that, you know, for whatever reason, one of us doesn't get back to you, another one will, uh, with any issues that do come up.
Well, I just, I think what I like to tell customers of your size is that, you know, the thing about LRS is that we are, we are big enough in Chicago and market area to service whatever, whatever needs you to have. At the same time, we are still small enough of just purchasing curly land disposal, just purchasing lazy disposal. We're actually small enough to understand, um, how important a customer you are. We're not to that point yet where everyone's, we're so big that everyone's just a customer. We're still that, that size company where every customer is very important to us. Um, you kind of in that, in that growth mode and wanting to make sure that people really see, see us and see the service level that we provide. So, that, that's why when you call in, like David's saying, you won't go through a customer server center, you'll have a direct contact and even to him and to myself. So, that when you call, he needs something, you'll get it provided by them.
And to answer that, you're going to have somebody who already knows your account, um, is aware of any past situations or any reappearances, if anything. Uh, so that will be, you're not telling the same story five times on the phone, uh, one call to another.
That's definitely happened.
Okay, I have a question. Is there, what kind of market is there for bulk plastic recycling? What actually happens to that? Where does it go?
The market, China is pretty well closed up.
Is it only the white?
Before.
That's why it's, isn't it?
No.
Where does it go then?
There's some, it's whatever, whatever plastic markets that they have, um.
Most of those are in mid-lass set. Um, those are our, uh, raw materials, our recycling facility, and then they're supporting the industrial plastics, and then we have New York's of the mid-lass, um, based on pushing plastics.
Uh, there are, there are. So, right now, uh, the nearest recycling facility would be the Crystal A Transfer Station, which would transfer to a, a processing facility.
Right. I have one question with you. Where does it go after the processing facility? You know, is it actually getting recycled or is it?
Yeah, I can show this back. It's one thing to say it's going to the transfer station.
Right.
And I know this is being recycled. And when China, or relations with China, that's how we lost most of that capacity for recycling plastic. So, we want to know where does this go for that processing or correct?
Wherever the outlets are at, you know, there's several outlets that they use. Um, most of them are, a lot of them are in the States now. Like you said, China has shut down a lot of it. But there are different products made all over, you know. You see the plastic containers and all the things that are making that plastic now. It goes to those manufacturers, most outlets, where they turn this, the plastic into other products. It is not, companies like, you know, Waste Management, uh, LRS Republic, Waste Connection, they, they cannot afford to, to allow themselves as publicly traded companies to catch themselves in, in a mess where they're actually taking recycling and throwing it in the landfill. That would be just horrendous as a publicly traded, uh, company. I, I can, I can assure you that they're not going to.
Right, my, I, I just, um, my concern with that is that I know there's very little of a market for recyclable plastic right now, I mean, little at all. So, you know, I might, I'm all for recycling. I recycle as much as I can, but I'm getting to the point where I'm tempted to just throw my plastic in the garbage because, uh, and I, and I can't, you know, is it going to, and it costs us, are we, you know, teaching the kids the right thing to do, but nothing's being done with it. And so, you know, like, do we really need to recycle the plastic? You know, that's where I'm at. Is this a cost that we're just paying for that, you know, like, it's not actually being a benefit to, you know, the environment?
It, it is a benefit to the environment, just to keep it out of the landfill, so, um, we may not be reaping the, you know, in the old days, uh, there were big rebates that came back for recycling. And much of those rebates have, have windowed to the point where, uh, in a lot of cases right now, we're paying to process recycling. But yet, if, if that cost is still less than the cost to dispose in a landfill, and it's environmentally better for us. So, where a landfill might be costing you $50, $60, $70 a ton to get rid of it there, we might be paying, you know, $30 a ton to have it recycled. We're not getting the 30 like we did, you know, 20 years ago, but it's still, when you look at it, you're paying 30 to have it processed versus paying 50 or 60 to see it go into a landfill. And then it is being recycled and reused.
So, do you, do you know the processors that you're actually working with that are, when this gets to or not?
I don't. Uh, I know, I know.
That's our question.
Certain things, uh, a lot of the cardboard and papers get sold to, to, uh, OCC outlets. If you look at like the yellow sheet, I mean, I've put the yellow sheet, it'll tell you where all the papers are going and certain types of cardboard and papers. The plastics, I don't know. There's so many different types. You know, you've got your milk dugs and your pot bottles are all different. The shrinks are all different. Those all go to different processors and a lot of them are the same.
Yeah, that, I guess that's our question. We don't really know, nor do you, it sounds like.
No.
What's happening to this. And so, it's, you know, we're, we, we can trust you, but we don't know you, and you don't know either.
What, what we can do, what we can do in this, the next meeting, if you'd like, what we bring back and do the training with the, uh, with the janitorial staff. bring back and do the training with the janitor staff, is maybe bring somebody back from one of our processing plants that managed one of our processing facilities and they can, then they can actually give you names of outlets where they're actually selling off that material rather than, you know, I'm coming from the operational, you know, we're picking it up, we're providing service. You take it to them and then they process and then they sell back to the market.
But you don't have the control over that aspect. Once you, once you pick it up and deliver it, you don't have any control over what happens to it specifically. And I think that's the question and I'm not sure it's a question you guys are capable of answering, is can you guarantee that the middle man is taking it and sending it to recycling or not? And I'm not sure that's the purpose of this contract either.
Yes, that wasn't really my question. That's my question, I just was concerned that we were, I know that you don't have any control over it, I just wanted to know exactly why, you know, what we're paying for, if we, you know, are we just spinning our wheels by, you know, recycling plastic or should it just go in the trash and that'd be easier? That was where I was going with it. Wasn't, I know that you don't really know where it's going, I just want us to know, you know, to be informed, the whole public should know, right? Where does this go? Is there a market? Are we just doing this for a feel-good thing and it's costing us money? That's where I was going with it.
And also, Joe, you've mentioned on the sustainability team could help educate different bits of plastics because there are some that are more recyclable to be recycled than others. So to help educate the janitor staff and anyone else on that.
Absolutely.
We also, full transparency, your recycling materials would be taken to a transfer station that you don't have full control over. LRS has recycling facilities in the Chicago land area, so that's something that we also offer to all of our customers, to convert your clothing, develop education and see how materials can handle them, people who are participating in the service.
One last question, kind of a minor and relevant compared to this. Do the numbers on the plastic need anything more?
Yes, yes, because you're so...
So if one is, is one good, do we recycle that? What is it, how do we know from the consumer point of view where to put it if it's garbage, for the garbage, if it's recycled? What numbers are put there to recycle?
I'd say if it's, there's any number of data to recycle and then once it's recycled, etc., then it's sorted out later. It does change in time, but if it's a clean, if it's like a plastic, you'll, milk jug, you don't want it dirty, you want it to clean, whether it's glass or plastic, but I'd say when it's out, it can be, you don't expect anyone to be experts, so if it's in the recycling area, it's packed and then it will be sorted in the facility. But it's a clean part is the biggest.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So I have a question and a comment as well. So on this flyer that I'm looking at, just to clarify, it says, when you collect waste from recycling, it's questioned separately, taken to facilities for sorting. If there's recyclables put in the garbage, is that going directly to a transfer station and then to a landfill or is that being sorted as well?
Waste that, so we'll be picking this up into separate trucks. So your, the Waste Management Transfer Station, Crystal Lake, has two areas of the transfer station, one is set up for recycling, which will align the trucks and go to their processing center downtown. The other, the other will go to their waste side of the transfer station and then that goes to a landfill. So they do, the trucks are separate and they keep it all separate there.
And you're asking if you sort of recycle material in a trash bin out of there?
Right, like if it would be sorted, just because the, this flyer I think is not clear, it's saying it goes through automated machinery to divert and ensure we are able to recycle as much material as possible. So is that just referring to recycling? Is it recycling, okay. So if it goes in the trash bin, it goes to landfill, even if somebody puts a clean milk jug in the trash, okay. And then my other comment would be, just personally, I was affected by a merger with Prairieland having been thrilled. I've seen a major decline in customer service with my own account that I have for Prairieland, so that would be a concern that I have moving forward. I was one that kind of recommended the board seek, or the staff seek bins with the new process and I had strongly recommended Prairieland and now I'm feeling a little bit disappointed in the service that I have with LRS. So just, just as a comment as a woodstuck consumer, there could be others out there, but I wanted, I wanted that to be voiced as well.
Of course, and we've acknowledged that with any mergers, maybe some pickups and it's no excuse for any bad service or anything like that, but as mentioned prior, for the current set of things, I take full responsibility, McHenry and Lake County. So any, I sign up any company that gets it up to me. You guys have my direct line at all times. My ring is on loud, my wife doesn't appreciate that sometimes, but it's on loud with my customers because you guys are paying for a service, you guys deserve to get the best service possible, especially since we're not the cheapest bid out there. So I can honestly for the commercial side of things and I can tell you that I owe everything I can to solve any issues, solve any problems. I make sure things is a smooth transition because it is typically a comp decided, there's going to be some bumps in the road, but we want to make sure it's as smooth as possible. So that's, it's like, my commercial, I can tell you that I will do my best to answer any questions as soon as possible.
And any concerns or challenges that you have, for sure, can we do our part in communication because I know that it's all along.
So the bins that you were referencing earlier toward like commons areas and so on, we can get those?
Yeah.
Is that a doable thing? I'd like to, like to see that happen.
Of course.
Can we do those in school colors or is that just, is that asking too much?
Well, we are blue and I know you woodside.
Well, that's, yeah, so we can do for sure here. We might do.
Yeah, if it's something that would, that you want special colors for the elements, we'd have to talk about that and properly add.
Then I'll be with our mainstay, one of the, I'm going to that part. I just want to make sure that we have these bins available so that the children can check, because, you know, the larger events is where we have a lot of waste from you and we want to make sure that there, that there's things available. I know they're easily identifiable and kind of attractive. I'd like to see something that looks good, you know? In the past, I was a teacher here for 35 years in this district, so I know that it's in the past, it didn't always look that good and I think sometimes it was all that for the garbage and it just kind of looked like that's what it was. I'd like to see something that really kind of shines and the kids and the adults and our constituents have all to be on the same page.
Yeah, and like we mentioned with the marketing, we can personalize it to the school, we can do that for sure. And we can place those above the bins, that way a double check that can see, oh, it's recyclable, oh, this should go to landfill, so we can always provide that at each location for each bin, okay?
Other questions you have? I just have a couple more. John mentioned the word, used the word pollution and I'm curious as to what happened with polluted garbage, I think it sounds funny, polluted garbage, but I mean, we're schools and these are kids and it's highly likely that a kid is going to take his garbage and throw it into recycling and vice versa. What happens when that occurs from your perspective? I mean, is it still sorted out or is it, once it's polluted, it goes in with the rest of the garbage?
No, it actually goes in with recycling and when it goes to the processing facility, there is garbage, trash residual that is pulled out of it. There are, there are sorts, a lot of it now is robotic, but there's also physical people that are there that are pulling things out, they don't know that's, that's a basketball, that's not, that's not recyclable. So we do see a lot of that and there is a percentage of waste that gets pulled out of recycling.
How about in terms of, are there any of you guys produce or have any educational materials, not about recycling, but about reducing the, the garbage production itself, recycling production itself? For example, by using reusable bottles or by using, not using plastic bags, but using Tupperware or things like that? Do you have any materials that can, that can be used or can you develop some materials that can be used that would educate kids as you don't have to use recyclables, you have options that do not require recycling at all and are actually better? Do you have any educational materials that expect, to that extent, or could somebody produce?
That's something we do work on, marketing team to customize, just education about including paper or plastic bottles, whatever it may be, and just encourage people to think before they're using materials.
So I wanted to piggyback on your first question about what happens. So when you were talking about the plastic needing to be cleaned, I'm just imagining our kindergartners throwing, you know, their half drummed things and all of that or, you know, Gatorade with the lid on and what happens to that? I feel like there's no way we're going to be able to get everybody to bring out their stuff.
And even the public at large, right? Think about all the homes, thousands of homes, they're not out of paper. It still goes to the recycling and when this, when it gets baled up or shredded, it goes through a cleaning process. As you send that out, you send it out in bales normally, it goes to a, an end user who's going to turn that into something. And part of that is there's a cleansing process, whether it's melted down, it's cleansed in one way or another, whether it's glass, everything has to be washed. That doesn't happen at our facility, nothing gets washed there, but as we take that stuff, even cardboard and paper, it goes to a mill where then it goes into like a big bin where it all is, I'll call it melted down, it's not, it's not melted down, but it's basically wet down to the point where it's turned back into a, into a mess and then turned back into another product. So whether it's, whether it's glass, it's plastic, it's paper, it all goes through some sort of cleaning and cleansing process in order to turn it back into something fresh and...
So just hypothetically, a kid throws in a Gatorade bottle with the wrap around the end with the lid still on, that would still get processed?
It still would.
You can tell we are interested in this topic, it's something that is identified as a priority, it's something we'd like to see more of in our school district. So we're, we're serious about that, that's why we asked you to come here and ask, we do appreciate you coming and talking. Does anybody else have any questions or comments or anything like that? Okay, if not, just motion on page 171.
Move to award the recycling and waste services bid to LRS for monthly costs of $6,500 for fiscal years 2024, 2025, and 2026.
motion by Mr. Priest. We have a second.
Second.
Motion by, seconded by Mr. Headley. Roll call please.
Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Headley?
Yes.
Mr. Maselli?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Homow?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmar?
Yes.
Thanks again for coming, you'll probably be hearing something from us in the near future, somebody's thinking we talked about tonight, so I look forward to working with you and thank you for coming and presenting that.
Hey Carl, hi, I didn't say I need to stay up for it, so I didn't say it.
Oh.
But I think in terms, you guys, it's something you have to do. In terms of success, like all the stuff they're talking about is great, but I feel like as a district, we're going to have to incentivize the students and staff to do this. I don't know what that looks like, but it's not, I mean, people told the students that they're good though, all the time, you know, so maybe we need to competition or, you know, we have recognition for custodians who are really taking the series. Like I just, we're really going to need to make a way to incentivize it on our end to make it successful.
You know, hopefully education, right? I think that's the, a key piece is that educating people to like really know, but I mean, a comment that is, you got a graphic, I'm not sure, recycling, which is fine, but I just, I mean, I, I think the education piece is important, just even for a young kid, understanding how important it is to, you know, you are making a difference doing it and maybe if you're better job of that.
Sure.
But we can, we can look at, if you're beginning to test it, for sure.
I think that is a wonderful food for thought for self-evaluation next month to talk about more in depth, so keep that in mind in the future. I wrote it down to remind us to do that and we will, we'll do that for our, as part of our next meeting, okay? But good point and, yeah.
No, go ahead, I got you off.
I will, I'll say it's a good point.
Okay, sorry. I do think the weakest link to the past, and I've come through the district, and quite aggressive with this, it's been with the custodial staff not following the group and it has, frankly. So if we're going to do this, it's one thing to get the kids to do it, and, yeah, that's, that's true, but we have to make sure they are, making sure that they're getting this stuff and they're, they're going to be stewards of this, they're going to care. I've talked to several custodians who it's kind of dismissed or has been in the past and I don't want that to be the case for the future. I think if we're going to do this, they have to, the ones, for my opinion, the ones that are going to have to be educated are then told this is, this is a priority, this is not a suggestion, this is the new manual.
And we'll start me at, hopefully their education piece right that I talked about will be a great discussion for us.
Exactly, but I might be a little...
Okay, I'm just going to piggyback and we can talk about this again at the board self-evaluation, but a lot of times, if the person's given the responsibility of educating and, you know, being, like you said, kind of a really big part of the program, if we get our custodians to teach the content, like they get taught and then they're investing themselves in creating this program, I think there's a lot of buy-in with that. So, to be continued.
All right. Anybody else have anything else on this top? Okay, we'll move into our new...
I want to go back. My only caveat to this, right, is we're trying to impose some of our beliefs on other, you know, it's just different, right? Like the best part would be if we could then actually believe in it. Like if, if their education, they could actually believe they're making a difference, right? I mean, you teach best what you actually know, you know? So we're not telling a guy at your, whoever's doing it, right, to do it, one thing, but the education piece is really big, because I don't really understand the why, you know, from administration and from maybe these people, maybe somebody else, I don't know, just the why is an important part to motivate them to tell them to do it. Because again, our, so we have very good people, very hardworking, and I don't doubt what I'm saying otherwise, but just, you know, maybe we got to try to get the why of them, why in some parts of this board and, um...
Penner did, you can say it that way, I don't like...
Yeah, absolutely, I did say it that way.
Okay.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll move into our new business. Our first item of new business is the approval of insurance committee recommendations for medical and dental insurance plans for 2023, 2024, and 2025.
The insurance committee met June 1st. The committee is made up of both our education members, administration, and members, representatives from all four collective bargaining groups. Our insurance consultant, Horton Group, was there and they presented a, what they always start off with is a report on performance of our current plan. It was a very positive report. Our plans and claim activities are going well in both dental and in the medical insurance. They then give a recommendation for what premium cost should be for the next year. Then there were questions about that recommendation based on the positive performance of the plan was a 5% increase in medical premiums, which is below industry standards for this year because of a lot of inflationary pressures. Many districts and many large organizations are seeing much larger increases in those premiums and then also due to the good performance of our dental plan, they're actually recommending that there be no increase in the premiums for the following year. We have, again, there's questions from our committee and then after that discussion of questions, there's a vote on both items and it was unanimous in both cases to approve that recommendation and bring that recommendation tonight here to the board.
Is anybody have any questions or comments or concerns?
Right, 5% increase, what, throughout, even that you were saying to a teacher in the district, perhaps, for a month, yeah?
It depends, do you have a family or single?
Yeah, same, it was like an individual.
Oh, okay, so individual, out of pocket?
It depends.
So we have it?
Yeah. Question of that matter, I would prefer that than this still?
Quick look as we speak. Actually, it's actually a fairly minor increase as I recall.
Because you're like, you know, you're paying 150 out of pocket, right?
Right.
You pay a check that's 5%, you got them up, seven, eight percent, something like that.
Seven dollars, right, yeah.
Yeah, and I, one could get, I don't know, but...
But you're right, I mean, if you're paying like for a single, it's around 43 dollars right now, it would go to like 47, so.
Okay, that helps me understand. Yeah.
Family obviously more because they pay more.
Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, it's just a motion on page 173 of our materials.
Move to approve the recommendation for the 5% increase in medical insurance premiums for the period of July 1st, 23 through June 30th, 24, and no change in dental insurance premiums for the same period.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Headley, seconded by Dr. Bidwell. Roll call please.
Mr. Headley?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Have a seat.
Mr. Percy?
Yes.
Mr. Misselli?
Yes.
Mr. Homa?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, um, next item of our business is our strategic energy review.
So as we look back on our goals that were set by the board in August and September, um, we report out on them. The vast majority complete, color is complete just because the data's not complete yet. Our preliminary data has meeting our academic goals, uh, which is encouraging. We'll, we'll give you that update in the fall, we'll give us two for final numbers. Overall successful year, obviously, um, parallel of the growth we've made with, with that pandemic and, and our post-pandemic calls.
Any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the board? Concerns? All right. Anything? Okay, there's no action regarding this. So we'll move on to our next item and it's to approve a little resolution to join the purchasing, join the purchasing cooperative.
Just one thing before I dive into that, just to answer to your question, the previous rate was, uh, $45.32 per certified staffer on employee only. It'll be $47.58, sorry, for $2. Sorry, just wanted to clarify that while I get it. Moving on to the item that we're discussing, um, this item is included on the agenda so the board can consider the district joining a cooperative. This was brought forward by our food director, food service director, Jackie McBride. She has made some, um, really positive changes throughout the food service and has, um, involved utilizing some vendors that aren't included in our current cooperative. We have, we've been involved in a cooperative for like, actually the last couple of decades. And she went out and explored to see if there was another cooperative that would allow us to save money while utilizing the vendors that she's been, you know, obtaining commodities from. And she found this, the, uh, the joint purchasing cooperative. And upon meeting with them and looking at, um, our current spending, after we pay a, a membership fee, which is about $32.75, we would end up, they're projecting that we would end up saving about $26,000, $26,0400 a year and would allow us to still continue purchasing the commodities that she's been preparing for our kids. So she wanted me to bring this forward and, um, thought this would be a good change for the district. In addition, it also allows for access to a, a software that we don't currently have that would allow more detail as far as the ingredients and the foods that we're serving and the calorie content. So two positives.
Just in general, I, I took from our parents this year that, that kind of the shift we've made in the last year for food has been appreciated. And I think part of that is Jackie is innovative, she's trying to get stuff out the kids, the kids want that, you know, not like tastes good and it's healthy. She's very cognizant of allergies and, and, you know, food issues that are on the gallic, so, um, that, you know, I think this is gonna be a good move to help increase that, the quality of food we give our kids every day.
I think, uh, I'm one of those parents that, for example, on more than one occasion, uh, having two vegetarian kids, the options that she's been providing has been, it, it's been a complete change for them in terms of variety and opportunity that make things a little, a little easier for us at home sometimes to have them buy lunch.
Any questions? Any questions?
Lots of questions, concerns? If mine's related, it's not on, it made me sick when I read this, this, this. Are there other areas we can be doing this co-op with as well besides, I, because I just, it's like, I mean, we purchased.
We're, we're a huge SIPC, is, is our, the largest, uh, co-op for purchasing materials for, uh, buildings and building operations. We're a huge member of that.
This is more.
Yeah, that's a question, yeah.
Well, yes, we also approved two invoices tonight, which is our insurance cooperative. We purchase our, all of our insurance through a cooperative. And this cooperative isn't just limited to food commodities, they also have other, um, such as, uh, school supplies, office supplies, like anything. So it's a little bit more expensive than what we currently can use and sell. Great question.
Any other discussion of the cooperative, but it was a purchasing cooperative. All right, it's up to the suggested motion on page 267 of our materials. Move to approve the resolution, move to approve the resolution to join the purchasing cooperative.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Percy, then Mr. Misselli?
Yes.
Seconded by Mr. Misselli. Roll call please.
Mr. Percy?
Yes.
Mr. Misselli?
Yes.
Mr. Headley?
Yes.
Mr. Homa?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Okay, then the next, excuse me, next item is consideration of bids for solar project.
So we're really excited about this. You know, obviously we've been talking about it for quite some time, we put the bid out, we're not ready to ask you to approve it, uh, tonight, or we're pretty close. I mean, we do want time for questions. You know, the big hangup has been, uh, you know, as you know, the all-in cost can be pretty close to $4 million now, but we've got the bid for about 3.5, a little bit higher than we expected, but the reason for that was the type of panel being used that we, that, well, our architect, tech, they did a nice job. They wanted to put the bid was one of those four conducive to catch, to catch as much energy as possible. That was what we want. And then we also have to add a maintenance plan, which actually the board brought that up, so we built that, I think is really important. And then there's just some security, you know, we have to secure that, you know, when it'd be concrete with the fence, things like that. So all in pretty close to $4 million now. And then you start looking back at the rebates, um, and, and we think, you know, we're at three, you know, close to 3.9 million and we're ready to get back. Now, you know, the, the big part at the federal, um, we just got information the last, you know, couple of days that is really promising. That, that could be like the next tax year for when we complete the project, we get that back. Now, it's new and I don't, I don't know any school in state that's actually advantaged yet, uh, so we'd be cutting out of there, but, uh, actually I'm calling, uh, kind of the foster office looking into it for us, Julie gets information, the state, we're really encouraged by that, that, you know, with that, you know, we're gonna recapture now that, the state money, that's gonna come in over a longer period of time than we originally thought. So probably over 15, 17, you know, almost 20 years. Um, so we're gonna get, you know, but we're gonna get, you know, uh, within the first couple of years, $5.5 million or half back right away and then the rest of the chip away at it, uh, over time. There is another option, if you wanted to, to get money back quicker, but you less money, we'd probably rather catch more money back over a longer period of time. But I do, but, you know, we won't ask you to approve until July, I want to take all your questions now, but, but we feel really good with the funding source and we're getting really close. I mean, you're not paying for it with funding and then everything you save for 20 years is profit. You talking about, you know, two, now, two, $3 million attention? Yeah? Yeah. It just looks like it's about $3.9 million across, and if all these estimates in our materials is correct, 3.8, almost 3.9 million in rebates to the point where we're, we're paying almost nothing to do this.
And then saving the profit.
And then saving, a $3 million, yeah, we're talking about a $3 million savings over 20 years after everything's paid for.
Well, correctly, not doing the thing.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, well, but, but some of this is money going out first.
Right.
And coming back, a lot of it coming back early, some of it coming back over time, but after all that's taken, after everything was paid for, we still think we're gonna save an area of $3 million now for over 20 years.
Are there other questions or concerns or thoughts about this?
One question. We have a, um, I like that we have a 10-year extended service plan. My question is, you know, it's about 20 years, so is there any?
I, I asked about that.
Yeah, actually, Dr. Moan asked and I called the vendor, they don't have a 20-year plan, they only have a 10-year plan. So that's why it wasn't offered to us. They had offered a five and a 10 and I called back and I said, well, you know, we're looking at 20 years and they don't offer that.
Okay, so after 10 years then, the cost, any repairs are on up?
Or, or we buy another maintenance plan?
Right, that's, yeah, that's, I mean, there, there might be one available.
Right, or we buy another 10 years like Dr. Moan.
Okay, that's the point, thank you.
One question I have too is, have we considered or had consideration about, uh, having Steve and/or their folks become educated in the maintenance of these so that we can do some of the self-sustaining thanks to that house? So, I mean, it's at some point, like after 10 years of the same, is there, in a building, is it able to do that? Is there, are there programs available? I'm asking, you got a night with your husband?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, we know today, I, you know, I, the, the board asked for the maintenance plan. So I, I mean, if we, if we have 10 years to work on it, I would hope, but, but being honest, right? Engineers or, or whatever staff that can work on solar is probably gonna be in high demand too. So maybe if it's competitive market, we can, we can work on it though for sure, we can absolutely work on it.
Just investigate it.
Yeah.
Just find out.
Yeah.
It'd be kind of nice to know that, you know, that we're, something that Steve has an idea what's going on or. Yeah, that, that is one of the questions I did ask, I had GRB, uh, when they send anybody out to the site to do preventive maintenance for the newer maintenance, we're gonna be able to channel them with our own staff, unless our, you know, from their staff, that's, that's part of their maintenance program. So we're definitely gonna take advantage of that. And I think over 10 years, hopefully. You might bring something?
Okay. Other questions or comments or anybody else you want to talk about, please.
So all you're seeking tonight from us is the pat on the back and saying, let's move forward and, and, I don't get that. Yeah, but I'm not looking for a pat on the back, yeah. I'm just saying, I mean, it's hard to say people move forward and, and, uh. Well, we, we originally, we weren't comfortable until very, in the last 72 hours of, that you could approve it. Now we are, but we still want to give you time in case you have questions or, so we could do maybe a little more research on it. We, we feel pretty, we feel much better today than we did on Thursday, you know, that's, that's kind of our goal time.
So, we'll bring that to you. Well, it is a motion, but do we have anybody with any objection to continue moving forward on this and hopefully having some business numbers and stuff that will allow me to get more potential approval? Is there any, you have any problem with any of that?
No.
All right, you're good?
That's perfect, thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you, I mean, this looks great. This is exciting. I think it's really exciting.
We're really excited about the pot, and the prospects for sure.
That's it for our new business, uh, do we have any committees that have met or haven't yet reported since our last meeting? Okay, and then we're gonna take a motion to adjourn. So. Mr. Percy, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Headley. Roll call please.
Mr. Percy?
Yes.
Mr. Headley?
Yes.
Dr. Bidwell?
Yes.
Mr. Misselli?
Yes.
Mr. Homa?
Yes.
Dr. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Do you, uh, move on? Done?